Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the South Pasadena, City of South Pasadena Library Board of Trustees for today, October twenty twelve, Thursday. We are at seven oh one P M. Here in the lovely, if not quite dilapidated, without that, you know, library that have used some funds from the state. In the Bradbury Conference Room. Good evening. I now call to order this meeting of Library Board Trustees. Administrative Secretary Shante, please call the role.
Dean Sarwin.
There.
Bianca Richards.
Present.
Kenneth Gross.
Here.
Edward Pearson. Here. Thank you.
Look the page here. So. We now have our first agenda item, public comment. In effort to better manage, excuse me. General public comment will be limited to thirty minutes at the beginning of the agenda. If there are speakers remaining in the queue, they will be heard at the end of the meeting. Phones, speakers, sign up in the first thirty minutes. A public comment will be queued up to speak. And after it's better managed, the business of the agenda. General public comment will be limited, um, repeating myself. If you'd like to make general public comment for items not listed on the agenda and are under the purview of the Library Board of Trustees, please now raise your hand on Zoom or turn in a speaker card. Mr. Fay, let's give the speakers a few seconds to raise their hands.
Right here. We have a, yeah.
Mr. Fay, may I have a count of speakers for general public comment? The clerk will maintain a list of those who are in queue.
Uh, zero.
I don't believe that's true. I believe we have someone here for trouble comment.
Yes, just I would like to do, uh, tell like, he'll be like to introduce person here, President of South Pasadena, who's very interested in working with the library, Susan McCarty. Elizabeth Goldinoff. Nice.
Welcome. Thank you for joining us. Uh, there being no one else present to speak, I will now declare the public comment period closed. We will move on to the presentations and action and discussion items. We have no presentations today. Item two, reordering additions or deletions to the agenda. Does anyone have any reordering of additions or deletions to the agenda? Bearing none, we will continue with the next item. Uh, we have recommended fall and winter closures. The recommendation is it's recommended that the board review and consider approving the following library closures. Wednesday, November twenty second, close early at five P M. Sunday, December twenty fourth and twenty and thirty first, we would be closed. I'll note that we are normally open on Sundays for only four hours from one to five, and last year on the twenty fourth and thirty first, or the Sundays before, or yeah, the twenty fourth and thirty first, we closed early at one P M. So effectively, we wouldn't be open since they're Sundays. So I think that that makes sense. Do we have any public comment for this item? Uh, do we have any discussion? Can I get a motion? I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that the uh, Library Board approved closure early on November twenty second. It's I P M and closure completely on the twenty fourth and thirty first of December. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I second it. Bianca.
We have a motion and second staff clerk. Please take the role.
Dean Sarwin.
Yes.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Kenneth Gross.
Yes.
Edward Pearson.
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you.
We'll move on to approval of the minutes of the last meeting, which was September fourteenth, twenty twenty three. Uh, it's recommended that the board review and consider for approval these September fourteenth, twenty twenty three meeting minutes. Uh, do we have any public comment for this item? Did everybody have a chance to review these minutes prior to next meeting or to be sent out?
Like, yeah, just there, there was just an error uh, on page two. It says at the very top, remember the approval of minutes of July thirteenth?
Uh, we didn't have an August meeting.
So are we? Oh, I remember. That's right.
We, we, yeah, we canceled our August meeting, so we were, we were, we were approving July.
My mistake.
It's an easy one to make.
Yeah.
Um, do we have any other questions, comments, concerns? If not, can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve of the, uh, what were these? The September fourteenth, uh, Library Board of Trustees meetings.
First second. And also. We have a motion and second staff clerk. Please take the role.
Dean Sarwin.
Approved.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Kenneth first.
Yes.
Edward Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Excellent. So we now have our uh, next item is the quarterly library budget report. Uh, I believe that is for staff. Um, did everybody have a chance to look at this? Looks, looks really good. Looks like we're on schedule.
Yeah, so, um, at first I apologize for getting these documents out too late. We are still getting used to this new process. It's time consuming and a lot going on. So I apologize for that because you probably haven't had a chance to review them, but, um, we are doing good. We're on track. Um, at this time of the year, you know, through this, uh, September thirtieth budget, you'd expect us to be, you know, twenty five percent spent in many of our kind of accounts that don't have big ups and downs, uh, in terms of payments. And that is where we are. I did include in the staff report, some of the items that you might have had questions about. So um, we're underspent on our permanent salaries because of the children's librarian vacancy. Um, part-time salaries, a little bit underspent, uh, also due to vacancies. The calpers item, you guys have asked about that before. Why is it that we're, we have no budget left so early in the year? It's because they pay a lump sum upfront, which allows them to get some savings. Uh, special department expense, uh, we spent more, uh, in the first quarter than I think we normally would. Um, but I think we're okay for the year. We'll keep an eye on it. Um, we bought a couple of things that were sort of for us, big ticket items, and that is probably what kind of pushed us to have such a high percentage spent this, this early in the year. Uh, dues and memberships. Also, we've, you know, spent half the budget because our big membership is with the South, uh, excuse me, Southern California Library Cooperative and Kalifa. So we paid that already. Um, books, CDs and DVDs, you'll probably remember, and, and the budget report that I ran shows the encumbrance. So the reason it shows that we only have two point six eight percent left to spend is because we've already encumbered many, many thousands of dollars to spend with specific vendors. Um, so we'll see that number, um, go down in this report through the, as we look at it again and again. Um, ebooks, same thing. We encumber the full, uh, budget to a, a single vendor. Um, contract services, um, we've spent almost all of our funds for that this year, and that is also because the big ticket items happen um, early in the year. Our C C Dynex invoice gets paid early in the year and O C L Cs, which is another big ticket item. Um, both buildings and improvements and machinery and equipment. We haven't spent those funds yet, but we are working on getting the projects. Um, that those are related to moving. One is to install the patio tables, um, out in front, and I'm working with Public Works on that. Um, and the teen area, we, we're shifting, um, the collections this way so that we can take out a whole range of shelving. So we're not done with the shifting yet. So once the shifting is done, then we can work with Public Works to have that shelving removed, and then we can start looking at furnishings purpose, um, and what we actually want to do on there. So that's kind of the, the overview. Nothing really remarkable to report.
Um, I know that I ask this a lot, and I apologize that I forget from meetings, meeting or group of meetings. Is that we're having challenge, a challenge getting Public Works to do it, or we're just not prepared, that the items aren't available yet? What, what is with the, uh?
Um, I need their assistance to, um, get a vendor to do the work. And I think it's a matter of, um, staffing shortages on their end. I will say that just today, the recruitment flyer went out for the uh, parts and buildings supervisor position, which is critical. That's the person I would normally be talking to about this kind of thing. Right. So the person above that is, is doing both of those jobs. So I think it's been a struggle for them to, to help us with this, but, um, I did speak to the city manager about it, so she's gonna help me to.
Because we've been waiting on this for quite a while.
We have. So yes, that, that's that's something we really need to get done. I did talk to the city manager about it and it's gonna help me.
Is that something that public comment at city council meetings would assist or?
I don't think so.
It's too bad we don't have a liaison to the city council.
I mean, I think, I mean, Janet probably knows. Public Works is incredibly.
Oh, my God.
Busy.
Unbelievable. So, so how long have you been waiting for this?
Well, we received the furniture last fiscal year, but we didn't have the funding to do the installation until this fiscal year. So really, since July.
Did they have a schedule for it?
I do not believe so. Katrina is, um, looking on it, and I need to follow up with her and see where she, where she is.
Okay, let me send off the contact.
And she, she knows. I had, I met with her.
She knows I'm coming tonight because I spent three hours with her at Public Works.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, she, um, asked me to give her a list of all the outstanding Public Works items from the library, so I'm gonna be getting that to her. Um, she might ask you, she might say, where's that list from Kathy Futto?
Right.
We've had some.
The outdoor benches.
Outdoor patio furniture. We've had some progress in some of the other items, so I need to go back and update that list before I send it to her. Um, you know, they, the city didn't have an electrician for two and a half, three years, so now we have one, but, you know, there's, um, you know, a million things that he needs to do. So he's been, you know, they're trying to prioritize and help them get through that, that list, but it's, you know, there's a lot to do, but we need, we need to move these services, so. So we're working on it, and Armani is gonna put her or in the water and help me. So that'll be good.
Is the eighteen percent of the budget provided by the special tax that typical otherwise, but it was a little higher than.
It used to be higher, but our budget increased this year, um, I think largely due to, uh, salary increases um, because our maintenance and operations stays pretty black. So, yeah, so I think that that's why it's a smaller percentage. Yes, usually it's about twenty.
Great, we got an extension of budget.
All right, I've registered a request.
Um, does anyone else have any further questions about quarterly library budget report, item six?
You know, uh, Kathy and I don't know who else, and Sean, I know it, this is more for you guys, but for us looking at it, it's a lot, um, it just, uh, captures it a little bit better, you know.
I'm totally in favor. I'm totally in favor of it. It's a great thing. It's just, yeah, yeah, it's a lot of work, and we're just trying to figure out how to best.
We, we appreciate it. I was able in twenty minutes last night to be fully prepared for tonight's meeting, so.
Yeah, it, it really does. When we, when we, yeah, I agree with Dean. When we get the material, it's, it's a lot easier to review. Yeah.
Uh, we're gonna move on to item six. I'm sorry, I said five, five. We're moving on to item six, which is meet Carlisle request, and I believe we have a modest update.
Yes, I mean, modest, not so modest because they filed the petition. Oh, you did? I didn't.
I thought we knew the amount last.
We, well.
No, I don't think I knew this. I just got them, I just got the letter from the attorney. So they filed to, um, close out the estate. So but there's a hearing in December.
I got one of those for the other one.
Yeah.
For our friends with.
Oh, yeah.
In December also. Must be the same day.
Yeah, so it was interesting seeing the, the filing because you could read, you know, the attorney had to describe their, the efforts, they, the work they did, and it was quite a, you know, trying to get to the other, um, people that have dequest and coordinate all of that. Um, so it was interesting to see kind of the detail of the sale of the homes and, you know, what that looked like, and that they did actually get multiple offers versus, you know, just selling it to a local person who, you know, maybe wanted them. So that was good to see. So, yeah, that's the amount, and hopefully that all goes well, and, um, it'll be nice to have the money in the bank.
Yeah, where does the money actually go? Because over the years before we use it.
Yeah, that's the next thing. Yeah, that's the next thing we have to figure out and talk to, um, city manager and the finance director about, because that's something you guys have brought up before, is that we don't want this money.
No, they can't.
Just sitting. Well, we wanna, we wanna try to
earn some interest.
Right. So I have, we have to do more research into that because the city has its own investment policies.
Yeah, very strict.
Yeah, so I don't know what this is like. It could be that there's, um, some kind of new approach to this type of money that's, you know, anyway, who does the city bank with?
Oregon Stanley and Western Asset Management. So they, they manage the account. And actually Zen, our new tracker, has been doing a lot of work with them, and actually, we've had them come, and we've actually talked about doing an R F P to sort of make sure we're getting the right stuff, but, but the investment policy is pretty strict. Uh, but I think our, you know, it's, it's kind of interesting, but there's sort of cash amount, and there's, you know, what percentage of the total funds can be put into corporate bonds, it's like thirty percent, you know, because those are a little risky here. And then seventy percent, I think, in other bonds, and then there's maybe not all seventy percent. There's a certain amount that has to be held, like a cash-ish, cash-ish. Um, but the percentage has, the percent of return has been pretty good.
Or right now, interest rates are through the roof, but that's going to shift over the next couple of years.
The question is whether or not you want to put these funds in, yeah, in longer. The other thing is that, that makes the return a little bit, yeah. You have to really look at the return because they keep the bonds to maturity. So the return looks a little lower than the actual return because you're looking at the return based on if you sold today. But they typically hold the bonds through maturity. So maybe it's something to talk to Zen about, our treasurer, and see if there's something we can do.
I mean, I think that the idea is that maybe it's invested according to the policy, but can the income sit in the account to build that?
Probably would need to because of the nature of this request.
Right. And I don't know that we've had anything like this before.
You mean like that? So I, I still don't exactly know the nomenclature, but you know, is it, is it a committed fund? Is it a designated reserve? It's, it's something like that.
Seems like it should probably be a separate account.
It is a separate account. There is a separate account for it, but we just need to work out the.
I don't think it's a separate physical account. I think it's a separate housing.
Yeah, in the, yeah.
But the question is whether or not it could be a separate, like, outside the policy in some way. I, I don't know.
It might make it. There's the potential for a a, a, a conceptual benefit because hopefully this will be the anchor to a, or the, 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 or the foundation for building a, a fund that is, you know, ten, fifteen, or twenty times this amount for, uh, new facilities on this part. So having it being itself segregated so that all new funds can just go on top of it, like the um, advantages, if that will work within the, uh, edict of the question.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so I, I'll put that on my list of things to talk to, maybe to Zen and Armani and John Dampst. Okay.
Wasn't it, there's a hundred thousand cash requests? So what happens with, with that? Because we'll get that obviously.
It goes in the same account. We have to use the same, it's for the same.
Is it? That's, no, all the money.
All the money. Because the city chose to have the, um, a state attorney liquidate those properties. So we're just getting one lump sum of cash that's made up of a hundred thousand dollars, and then the proceeds.
The hundred, hundred, hundred can't be used for, 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 it's for the same thing as that.
Yes, yes, yes. And this, this, the net amount is two point seven, yeah, change, yeah.
Does the city, does the city, though, have a mechanism in place for foundation fundraising? So like, if people wanted to donate just big amount of monies, does the city already have something established? I don't know.
I don't think so. I don't know. I mean, I think, you know, how long ago? How long has it been since the city actually did fundraising of that, of this magnitude? I'm not sure. I just don't know.
Well, whenever they built this building, probably.
Well, but it's anything in the city.
Well, I mean, the, the only two donations that I can think of that went to the city are Romine and Mullen, right, which was a couple hundred thousand dollars, um, for the senior center, fifty for us, and then the other was sixty or something. And those are, those are just sitting. They're not earning income for, for, you know, th- those are just flat amounts wherever that income that is earned on that money.
It's swept into the general fund.
Exactly.
It would be lovely if we could, if we could retain the income from this request, and I think it might necessarily need to be maintained uh, because as Bianca noted, um, hopefully, we will be getting grants, uh, funds, state, federal, local, you know, county, what have you, uh, individual bequests from, uh, wealthy donors in the area. Uh, and all of those could, should go into a designated fund for, uh, the capital improvement if this.
Well, I think that, yes, I agree, but I do think that uh, many of those donations would probably get made to the friends of the library for tax purposes, and then the friends transfer it to the city. But, yeah.
Which probably is, talk about twenty first centuries.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, um, so, yeah, I will, I plan to talk to them about it, and I'll, we'll bring the city attorney in the loop to see what she thinks about the legal necessity of having income stay with principal. Um, so, yeah, we'll, we'll figure that out before December, when the money theoretically comes. I don't know how quickly, you know.
Uh, it, it can happen quickly or it can take a while.
Okay, yeah.
But usually, as soon as it's signed off on, yeah, they start cutting checks.
Yeah, okay.
You have to wait, uh, it can take two to six weeks. Once there's an order, you have to get the order signed back from the actual judge after the issue is, it's a process.
Okay.
So probably in February.
Okay, so that gives us even a little more time to figure out the, the nuts and bolts.
Could be soon. Uh, any other questions, comments, concerns related to the probable question? It's updated. Outstanding. We're gonna talk about the library special tax fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four administrators report. I don't know if anyone had a chance to look through this, but obviously Kenny did because he saw that, um, we, uh, we were eighteen percent instead of, uh, twenty. Um.
Yeah, I just, uh, so city council, this came before, uh, there, a different version of this report went before the city council on October fourth, and so they approved it. So, um, those funds will be collected as per the resolution that, that they adopted, but I did want to share with you guys the actual report. I mean, it's not really, doesn't really have that much information. You can see the annual C B I increase and how it changed over the years, and why we have such a bumper prop year last year because the interest rate was so high. Um, but very little changes in terms of the numbers of units by different types, as you would expect in South Pasadena. Um, not a lot of changes in the, in the holdings, the parcel holdings. Um, so nothing, nothing that remarkable, but I did want you to have a chance to look at.
It's nice to know, and we spent a, a great deal of, of time and effort, uh, assisting or, or whatever our proper legal designation is that we cheerleading the, um, committee that assisted in renewing that task, so.
The other thing I'll mention, since it's related to this, so I think it's okay to mention it, is that, um, you'll probably remember that when we were moving into the November twenty 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 two vote, the California Business Rental Table had that other, uh, measure or ballot, yeah, ballot measure, um, that they, they are, that is probably gonna be on the ballot. So I've already talked to the city attorney, and kind of everyone has a heads up because we do need to look at if that passes, how does it impact our, our tax? Um, it's, it's written to, and again, the, the language of the of it could change between now and then. Um, the governor has petitioned the California Supreme Court to make it, take it off the ballot because it's unconstitutional or something like that. Um, but it is, if it does go through as is, it's like retroactive, so like January twenty twenty two. So it encompasses our, our, um, action. Uh, so we'll stay on top of that and just.
It does seem like that would be unconstitutional, an unconstitutional taking against the will of the voters.
Right? I mean, they voted for it. Yeah, yeah. So we'll, we'll see what happens. Um, but they did get it. They did get their signatures, and, uh, it is. Hopefully.
Okay, well, that's good to know and to keep an eye on. It would be horrible if we have to go through that vote again. Uh, we're moving on, I believe, to item eight, library health and safety update, which, uh, has a power over considering the letter.
Um, you guys had asked, I think Annie had asked for this periodically, and I realized I have been giving you that periodically. So, um, I just wanted to give you sort of an overview of how things are going in this department. Um, you know, we still do a lot of behavior management and code of conduct, um, enforcement, and, uh, we do have a number of people that are banned currently, uh, whose library privileges are suspended. Um, but I just, it, it goes on. I would say that, um, it's certainly better than it was when we first had this conversation, and Carol is living outside.
Good.
Um, so it's.
So there has been a market improvement.
I think, I think so. I mean, that was a lot, uh, during that time. So, yeah.
Has there been an improvement on the overall issue? If we took Carol out of the equation, the number of people coming in, the number of people having issues with picking, you know, baths from the sink in the bathroom, things like that?
No, it's about the same. It's probably about the same. Um, I think it's the, so the next section talks about the kind of, well, no, actually, I don't know. I talk about the cities. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Um, the city, uh, has its mental health crisis team that's on site in the city several days a week, and right now, they have a supplemental outreach team who only is on site for like two hours on Friday. So they, um, I think they made like nine contacts, um, in the month of August. Um, and, yeah, it's, I, I think it's in here.
It's a.
So I think, you know, it, it's just, it's just hard. There, you know, there are people who need help at a certain time, and there's, it's very hard to actually connect them to help. And then, of course, many people don't. I have, do not want to. They made it very clear that they don't want help, but, um, if I'm not mistaken, uh, at some point in the nearest future, the supplemental team is supposed to be in the city one whole day. So I don't know when that's gonna go into effect, um, but I know it's coming because they were trying to decide what the best day would be. Um, so we're looking forward to that because any, you know, any amount of, of time and resource that we can call on is useful.
Can I just make a comment? I don't know if it has anything to do with the health and safety update, but I noticed coming into the, um, the library, a lot of landscaping has happened, like things have been really cut back. Was that for health and safety?
I'm sure it is. That's something that I actually came to work the other day. I'm like, what are they doing?
Yeah.
Nobody tells, you know, they don't tell us. Um, but, yeah, we talked about this, I don't know, a year and a half ago, we said, you know, can we get all those bushes out of there? So, yeah, they did some work. I haven't actually looked that closely, but they took out a lot of, um, a lot, a lot of the shrubbery that's up close to the building, um, to, which should help us with unattended belongings being stored there.
I was gonna ask you why.
Yeah, people, you know, camping out there, putting stuff there, um.
You did it as a bathroom, public bathroom.
Yes, I'm pretty sure that that's why they did it. It's just coming a long time after it was talked about originally, so, um, yeah, I need to look and see what all they did. I only, I saw them working on the fronts by the.
But that's all I saw. I came in through the front, and I just thought, wow.
I think that's what that's about. I mean, it's certainly what we talked about as one of the mitigation things that we could do was get rid of some of these little
Outdoors.
Little places that people can.
Then it did hang out to the library.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, uh, next on our agenda is the library operators update, which. Uh, and I'd like to, uh, acknowledge you and staff Kathy for providing those on a weekly basis as we discuss. Meeting here is very beneficial, so that we can, it, it's great to have it all in one place again, but. Makes it easier to follow along when it's once a week.
It kind of keeps you in the loop throughout the month, right? Dropping in one day and then going back to not thinking about it.
Is there anything you wanted to specifically highlight that presumably revolve with Red Bee?
Um. I'll just say that we had, um, our second round, final round interviews for the children's librarian last Friday. And, um, I think we have a couple of good candidates, so Maida is checking references right now. Um, and we're pretty excited. I think, I think we have some good choices, so that's exciting. Because that, that typically, that's really hard to, it's gonna do so much service to families and kids. Um, and we have a, one of our part-time children's librarians is vacant. And we wanted to wait to hire that until the full-time person comes, so, um, we'll be glad to get this person on board. But otherwise, um, no, I don't think I have anything else to add. I will say one of these items is about the LA's subject, um, organization that Olivia's, uh, participating in. She and I will be at USC for what's called the Los Angeles Archives Bazaar. And it's something that happens every year at USC and all, I don't know how many, two hundred different kind of archives, libraries. Um, special collections all converge and everybody has tables and, um, it's a great event. So I'll send you guys information about it. I think it's, um, uh, the twenty-ninth of October. Um, it's really fun to stop by and see what's, how rich our kind of region is in terms of. History, the Olympic people, you know, are there, the, I mean, everything you can think of. It's, it's great. So she and I will be doing that. Um, and otherwise, you know, I think that that's. We don't have anything else to say.
It's exciting that the, uh, we completed the digitization of the microbeach to reveal.
Yes, that's very exciting. Um, it's great for, for being able to do research. Um, eventually it will be available offsite as well, but our agreement with newspapers dot com. Who is doing the digitization is that they get some proprietary access for a certain period of time. Um, so right now, you have to be in the library to access the, the, um, the platform. But eventually people will be able to do it from home.
Reasonable. You gotta be in a library to access the microbeach, so.
Yeah, true. That's a good point. Um, Larry McGill is always asking, when are you gonna, when can I get to that from home? When can I get to that from home?
Larry is very excited about.
It is, it's a great platform. I mean, it's really easy to search and use and, and download what you want and it's, it's great.
I, I've used it before with my uncle. My dad's brother is ninety-eight years old and he worked on a paper in Lafayette, Louisiana. Uh, right after World War Two, and he was a reporter there and he gave me a new paper. I found it. I found all his articles he wrote.
Wow, yeah, it's really interesting. I mean, I just will search library. I mean, you know, just to see what happened, what, you know. And previously, we really didn't have, some things were full text searchable, but not everything. So we really didn't have the ability to.
Do you, you do have some archives that we do online, correct, or no?
Um, yes, yes, I, everything up until, uh, I, uh, what did, oh, I forget how many. Everything up until like very recently, like the recent newspapers, we need to talk to the owner and see what we can do about that. But yeah, all the old stuff is now available online in the library.
In the, that's right.
Really great. And, and you said that that is keyword searchable?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize. I thought it was just straight digits.
No, you can search anything you want. Yeah.
That makes it much more.
I'm gonna try to find out when the tree was planted. That's what I wanna see. Um, and then the other thing, just, uh, if you haven't had a chance to look at the new catalog homepage, um, that Jenny worked on and launched. A huge improvement over what we had before. Um, the catalog, uh, product itself is something we implemented back in twenty nineteen, I think. Uh, but we just didn't have the staff capacity to kind of make the most of the, the product and what it can do. So, um, we made it look a little bit nicer, but also now there are lots of links to information that people might want. You know, a lot of people, they don't even go to the website, city website. They, this is where they go. So having this information there is really important.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Um, well, thank you. Uh, if there's nothing else, I believe we'll move on to our next section of communication. Uh, we have board president communication. I guess that's me. Uh, as I said, uh, I, I want to applaud you and staff for the, uh, work on the transition that we've done. In terms of the way these meetings are structured, um, as you can see, we're thirty-six, thirty-five minutes into it. And we're, we are the communication, and that's, I think, in very large part because of that preparation that you've done for us. Uh, I would also ask if there's a way to, um, depending on what our other agenda items are for. Uh, next month, if we could possibly revisit, uh, some policies.
Yeah.
We're due to do that again.
Yeah, we just didn't have one ready this time.
Uh, and otherwise, uh. Wish everyone a lovely month as we transition into fall finally.
Yeah.
Uh, no, I'm supposed to read here. Moving on to board member communications, who would like to go first?
I will, because I have really nothing to.
Well, thank you, Ed, for that exciting update.
Yes.
I will note that Ed is, once again, wearing his blue shirt.
I've got mine on too. Yeah.
Well, I did think to do it at like, what, two in the afternoon? I figured you were already out, wouldn't matter.
But I went home first.
And no excuses. Who would like to go first?
Well, I'll go next because I don't think I can top Ed, but just that, uh, I apologize for having my blue shirt.
Well, I'll, it ended up here. I did, uh, contact some of the neighbors for the closure of Halloween. So I, uh, yeah, so they were, um. Yeah, they were, yeah.
They like that idea or they don't like that idea?
Uh, uh, they, they are afraid there's gonna be a lot more public peeing. Yeah, so they were not some, some of the neighbors weren't happy about that. Cause they're, yeah, but what are you gonna, what are you gonna do? You can't, yeah.
We're, we voted last month. I think you weren't here. We're gonna close at six o'clock on Tuesday, the, is it Tuesday this year? The thirty-first, um, because it's, uh, nobody can use the library.
The neighborhood is.
Yeah.
Given the, um. Presence down the block of the massive block party, wouldn't there be a police presence anyway that would?
The police, the police are, of their, the police are wonderful on Halloween night. No.
So wouldn't that dissuade people from public urination?
Well, there's a lot of dark corners on Halloween night. But you know, when you've got, you know, but Dean, when you've got a ton, your, your kids and, you know, they gotta go to the bathroom. I know, when I used to live here, I didn't let people in our house to go to the bathroom, but.
Very thankful.
Yeah.
Um, well, thank you. Uh, I would like to, uh, uh, move on to the city council liaison communications. Council liaison, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Um, I apologize for missing last month's meeting. I was out of town, traveling. Um, and, um, I did get a text already back from, um, our city manager. And she is going to follow up to see when we can get the, the patio furniture installed, to see where that is. I will also follow up. I know, um, Kathy, you will as well, but I will talk to John and finance on what we can do about. The account and looking ahead to sort of fundraising and what that looks like structurally. I'm afraid, yeah, I will look into that. Um, and with our city attorney, because there'll, there'll be some kind of legal restrictions as well. But, um, yeah, and I, and I, other than that, thank you. I'm actually hosting a little dialogue session at my home. On November fifth, anybody's interested, from eleven to two. To sort of go over, um, oh, yeah, to just go over, this is sort of an idea of sort of. What's been happening the last year. Um, what still needs to happen and taking questions, issues, you know. I'm gonna wear sort of a bulletproof vest. But you know, the truth is, there's a lot happening. There's a lot of forward progress. It's just. I mean, there's just a lot to do. So thank you for all your efforts on for the library. And I don't know where we stand on, but I'll wait for your comments on the planning and where we stand on it. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Uh, moving on to item thirteen, the friends of the library, uh, communication. Uh, do you have anything you'd like?
I do. I guess I have a lot, actually. I always do. Um, cause right now it's kind of the busy time for the library. There's a lot going on for us. Um, as I mentioned last time, we're, uh, in the process of looking at and developing a new website. So hopefully that will move along quickly. Um, we also are looking into the possibility of friends like hosting a couple of events. Um, they came to, uh, to Kathy and maybe they're a better fit for the friends. But one of them, um, is joyful, living, happy life, uh, seven habits of joyful living. And it's gonna be, if we do it, it will be presented only in Mandarin. And I think it will help with the library, with the diversity and inclusion and, and, um, I know they do it at San Marino. Um, and they've done it at the Huntington Gardens and it's been a sellout. And the other one's a local author that has approached us and maybe about a, uh, book signing and we felt that we don't wanna start. You know, focusing on one, but maybe we are going to, um, research something that we can maybe get a couple of local artists. I know, I mean, authors. I know we did it in the past, uh, with like three, uh, local, and so that.
That'd be really, that'd be really nice.
Right.
Be to showcase authors, but not make it to on one.
Right, right. So that was kind of what our board voted on, that we just can't get into that, that habit. Although we would love to support this person, it just, um, we just can't, can't do that. Um, so our nominating committee has been formed and I'm excited that they'll be meeting soon. Um, we did audits on all of our, um, accounts and all of them are in order and in completed. And our, our new CFO is, is amazing and she is like a dog with a bone. And she gets in there and finds every little penny or any form that wasn't done. So if we're really excited with what she's doing and moving us forward. Um, so the budget, she's out of town, so the budget was already completed and we will present it in November, not at this meeting. Um, that's pretty exciting. And what's really exciting for the first time in history, I think, that our taxes were filed before, way before the due date. You know, she got those done and on it, and so that was pretty exciting. Um, our, um, holiday, um, books, oh, the holiday luncheon, sorry, is on December seventh. I think that's the same meeting day as yours, but, um, you'll be invited and it'll be at noon. Uh, more information to follow and some really exciting news. This has been something that I've wanted to do for a long time. And so I would like, wanted to have a scholarship for the South Pasadena graduating seniors from the Friends of the Library. And we would have criteria, but I also, um, talked to Restoration Concerts. And yesterday, was it yesterday? Uh, they voted to also go in and have a scholarship that would be geared towards music. You know, in the past, they, they had, they had turned us down, but they were so excited. Uh, that meeting yesterday was really, really productive with them. It was really, a really good meeting. So that, theirs will be five hundred dollars. We don't know what we'll do, but that will happen in two thousand twenty-four, so I'm really.
Hundred twenty grand.
I, I wish, I wish. Um, so membership, we have a hundred and ninety-five members. And that has brought in, uh, twenty thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. It's slow this year. So we'll see what happens when, we'll do one more little push again at the end to remind everybody. Um, but I always, like I said, please, if you're not a member, to renew your membership. Um, so the bookstore is doing really well also. Um, they have brought in over thir- about thirty thousand through August. So that's great. Um, their holiday book sale is December one through three, so save that date. They have a new pos- policy in place because, um, mostly because of these book sellers, they come in early. So the policy is that you, if you wanna get in early, if the requirement with, the requirement will be that you have to have membership paid. An amount of twenty dollars by November thirtieth. Because the book, these dealers were coming in early and paying a dollar, five dollars to get in early, so that is the new policy. Uh, what's another exciting thing is that eBay is up and running. And with, um, thirteen books, they made nine hundred dollars that first try. And I know it's up now, I think, to, uh, maybe almost two thousand, that they're, um, and so they have Kevin O'Neil, who's a. Um, one of our new, younger board members who's helping with that, so that's pretty exciting. Um, they said it's a lot of work, but it's been successful, so they're happy. Um, the silent auction had a lot of new bidders. They had a hundred and sixty-eight people. Yeah, so they think that they're reaching it because, and I'll go on to that later, we, we are now really pretty active. With Instagram and Facebook because of our new communications, uh, Roseanne, as we talked about, you know, she's young and. Knows exactly what to do, which, you know, I don't know how to do, so they're really excited. Um, and the first concert of the season was held. And, um, yesterday I found it, it was the most attended concert in the history of the committee.
Wow.
And they also feel that it's because of all the Instagram and, and posts, that it's just reaching a different audience. Because they are tagging the musicians also who bring in their friends. I, I mean, we'll see. It could be a fluke, but it seems like maybe it's, it's finally working. So their new season tickets are available to purchase online, or you can give a check of one thirty-six for eight. Now there are not eight concerts left, or twenty-five at the door, and, um, you can get more information on our website. Communications, that's what I was gonna talk about with Roseanne. She's doing this amazing job. So, um, there's been a lot of activity for the bookstore and for concerts. There are, we have our newsletter that goes out, um, the fifth of every month, so that's been great. And if you haven't received it, let us know and we can add you to the list. We always welcome, if you have news articles, let us know. We'll be happy to put them if there's something you want us to say. And, uh, we would like for you to please follow us on Instagram at Friends of, Friends of South. S-O-P-A-S, S-A-P-A-S Library, so that's our handle. And that's my report.
Outstanding. Thank you so much. Uh, trusty liaison to the friends, uh, uh, communication.
Always give everything.
Do you have anything that you would like?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, um, impressed with the, the newest young people on the committee. Um, yeah, when it comes to the social media, they really have, uh. They, they're, they're really in control with that and it's, and it's been really nice and it, the Instagram is really nice. And, and just like little things like, you know, the, the logo, you've gotta make it fit, you know, and so in, in these. They knew how to do it and craft and, yeah, so I was in.
Oh, and I should mention they're working on a new, newer logo, a new logo.
Yes.
That, that's more, you know, friendly, uh, you know, social media friendly.
The friends logo will be more friendly.
Yeah.
Uh, if that's not it, we'll move on to the library director communications. Staff liaison, do you have anything you'd like to share?
I do. I want to segue from the friends to let everybody know that next week is National Friends of the Library Week. So it's a special week for the friends. Um, they haven't quite figured out how to thank you for all that you do. But we will definitely be doing some social media, um, posts and, and tagging you guys. Um, because friends are so important, not just for the money that you give us, but for the support and the encouragement. So I wanted to let everybody know that's next week. Um, I wanted to let you know that the governor signed a bill, SB three twenty-one. Which has to do with, um, requiring, uh, public libraries to make sure that. Um, the kids in their local school district have library cards. Um, so we, with, uh, we have a couple few, two or three years to get that figured out. And the idea is that the state library is supposed to, um, give us some assistance. Um, and I know that this was a big struggle because I know the California Library Association was like, a lot, a lot of. Libraries don't have the, the, the capacity or the funding to, to take this kind of project on. So the state library, I don't know that they have funding for us, but I think that they'll hopefully have personnel that will help statewide, maybe. Um, updating, there's a toolkit out there for libraries about how to go about these partnerships with schools. Um, and so they may update that, so we'll see. I'm kind of just got, just got signed. So I'm waiting to see what we hear from the state library, but it's something we've wanted to do here in South Pass for a long time. And most of our kids probably do have library.
A requirement that we have to have a hundred percent of the students? That seems like that's not.
We have to make it, uh, we have to make it possible for them to, I mean, you know, students may not take us. The way that it typically works, um, in my experience, is that there's, uh, an MOU or some kind of a. The way that it typically works, in my experience, is that there's an MOU or some kind of agreement between the library and the school district and they work it out. And often the school district will just share student IDs, whatever. I mean, there's different ways that you can go about doing it. But yeah, it's the idea that every student, I forget, student success card, you know, a lot of, LA Public does it. Burbank does it. The county does it, but I don't know. So it's, it's something that people have done. It's not something new, but it's, but I don't know which, um, senator or assembly member came up with this, but, uh, but we're excited because it'll help us get something done that we've wanted to do anyway. So we'll be reaching out to the superintendent just to kind of, I don't know if this is on their SPUST's radar at all.
I, I should know the answer to this, but does, do the librarians go and do events, presentations, assemblies, whatever you call them, at each school?
Um, we do, in the fall, we offer school visits and we offer the classes to come to us. I think next week we have like all five, Marango. How many first grades do they have at Marango?
Well, they used to have what, three, four?
Yeah.
When it was, but that's been a bit since I had a first grader.
Yeah. So, so they'll be coming to us. So yeah, sometimes we go to them if they want us to go to them. And then for summer reading program, we always go.
It just seems, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to put more on poor Lydia, but she does such a wonderful job of presenting South Pasadena history in an exciting and interesting way, at least to an adult, and I would presume that she can do it for kids too. That that might be something to coordinate and thereby be able to maybe find some funding from the state because of our solar history or something like that.
Yeah, it would be interesting. I mean, I think that, um, you know, we do a lot of outreach to teachers. I don't know what, is it fourth or fifth grade that they do their local history projects? You know, the teachers are engaged with us at that time for those grades, because their students are looking for this information. We have a number of, um, study guides with primary resources. We have a lot of stuff prepared to help the students already, um, through the, through our website. But yeah, if they, certainly if somebody wanted us to come to the classroom and talk about something, we would do it.
I was thinking more like an assembly for, you know, with all the first and second graders or something. You can get a bunch of them all at once.
Possibly. I mean, they've never asked for something like that, but it's something we could think about and offer. What we find with the schools is that they're so busy, you know, they have so many things going on. They, it's, it's hard for them to commit to.
It really is. I mean, I know that when the PTA would want to do things, they'd say, we really just don't have any room in, in our curriculum to add other, you know, like art days or whatever.
Right. I wanted to just make sure everybody knows that there was a very nice literary for our former librarian, Michael Coleman, which we gave you guys copies of. So that was very nice to see that. I want to let you know that Sean and I are going to do the class next week on parliamentary procedures. So we're gonna get brushed up on our Robert's Rules of Order. I feel like Diana would always, you know, keep us in line if we weren't doing something right. And so I feel like, well, please step, step up a little bit. So we're gonna do that and hopefully that will help us, you know, making motions properly and doing things correctly. And, uh, I thought this would be of interest. I think I shared this with Dean, but this is something that you may remember that the Brooklyn Public Library started issuing library cards to teens all over the country to help teens access books that might be banned in their own communities. And at the time, I think it was Dean who said, can we do that here? And the answer was no, because we don't have the resources to.
Actually.
Yeah, to do that for everybody, but LA County Library is doing that. So to the state, not the whole country, but any teen in the state can get a library card through Los Angeles County and access the eBooks and all of that stuff. So that's exciting.
Parental consent.
Um, I don't know how they go about it. It's teens aged thirteen through eighteen. Card allows teens to borrow up to five digital titles at a time. It's good for one year. Um, I don't, I don't know. I don't know. Like here, do we have to get a teen? I think, yeah, parents to sign off on a teen card. So I don't know. I don't know what they're doing. The other thing that's big, which some of you may or may not have seen this email before, that I sent right before this meeting, is that we got our notification from the state library that we did not get our California State Library Building Forward Critical Infrastructure grant funding. I.
I have to remind you, was that a fifty-fifty?
It was, it was fifty-fifty, but we were eligible for a, a reduction. So it was more like, like fifty-five, forty-five or something. Um, so basically, uh, in round two, they had a hundred and forty-eight applications, thirty-four libraries got awards. According to the notification letter, specifically, we did not get the award because we are too rich. The, by, by law, they had to focus on high poverty areas. So in round one, I looked before this meeting. Part of the reason that I was hopeful that we would be competitive is because in round one, they did give money to libraries that are richer than us, richer in terms of the local area, not the libraries, but the, the community. So I thought, oh, they are giving money to people with, you know, to communities that have a high, you know, better, not such a low poverty rate. So I don't know. I mean, I think that around one, um, the people that applied to round one, first of all, they gave many, many more awards in round one, like two hundred something, I think. And a bigger portion of the total, it was like four hundred and thirty million. And this time, they basically saved a hundred and seventy for round two. So the first round people had more money to work with. And I think that, uh, we weren't able to do round one. It just wasn't feasible. There was a really tight turnaround. We didn't know where the matching funds would come from. We hadn't decided what we were doing with ARPA money. Probably we were, you know, had finance directors, you know, it, it just wasn't something we could do. It looks to me like in round one, the people that were able to make that deadline were bigger libraries, like the county, who have dedicated staff that deal with only facilities, which makes sense. They have eighty facilities or something. Um, and other people who already had sort of, if not shuttle-ready, at least they had already done their facility assessment and knew what was wrong with it. Um, so they had that documentation that they needed to apply and we just didn't have it. And there was really no way for us to get it in time. And I don't know if we would have been successful in round one. There's no way to know, but they did give folks in round one money that have a, um, a better score than we do, a wealthier community. So in terms of where we fall, we're, we're right in the middle. Out of a hundred, out of a thousand one hundred and twenty-six library buildings, we're number six eighteen. So even though our number, which is seventeen point seven oh, makes us sound, oh, they have a lot, you know, they, they're not so poor. We're actually right in the middle. But if they, and, and they're gonna, the, apparently the governor and the legislature have said that they are gonna don't give another hundred million over the next three years. And that they will award that money to the same pool of applicants. So so we, we, you know, but there are a lot of libraries that are still, you know, we, the community has a poverty index that there's a lot of people who have more need than us. So that was disappointing. We'll have to, I'll have to, you know, start meeting with Public Works and the city manager and figure out, you look at our list of projects and priorities and try to figure out what, what are we gonna focus on with the money that we do have? The city money that was going to match what we hope to get. So I can report back about that more next month, once we've had.
What was the grant amount we asked for?
We asked for a little over a million dollars, I believe. Um, is that right? I think so.
It would seem then that the city had earmarked roughly a half a million or more, or matching, so.
Over the next like four fiscal years, so.
Oh.
So it's, you know.
Just seems that we had, I think, in, in our request were some very important for self, for health and safety issues.
Right. So for example, one thing that we probably, that, that we had prioritized was replacing all the HVAC. To me, that's, that I would say, that I would have done if we have the money from them. But I'm not gonna spend our money on that. There are other things that are more important, like safety and security and like leaking, you know, low-grade leaks on the front of the community room. So we, we need to kind of look now, now that we know we're not getting this money, at what are our priorities and what do we want to try to tackle? This fiscal year, next fiscal year, you know, because the whole concept was built around this grant, which I think we had four years to spend. So all the projects that we applied for were spread out over these four years. So I think we just need to, to revisit it. One of the questions on the application was, if you don't get this funding, how are you gonna complete these projects? And what I told them and what I'll tell you is that slowly, you know, I mean, we know we need to do them. We need to do these things. And we just will have to do it as our budget allows. So.
Kathy, what's the most pressing?
Um, I.
Would like one is yours one and two. What would be most?
I think for me, the below grade, um, leaking on the community room. And I would say some of the safety stuff, like lighting on the ADA ramp. We didn't ask for park lighting in this, but lighting on the ADA ramp and some of the other safety things that we've talked about.
It seemed that lighting on the ADA ramp would be something that could open us to potential litigation for not having that.
Yeah.
For that, that seems like we go beyond just the library, but to cities fiscal safety.
You would think so.
Yeah, I asked, you know, we have an all-day meeting on Saturday. Um, you can talk about priorities and which plan.
Yeah. Yeah. And I can, I can look at that a little more and think about it, but I think, yeah, for, for us, it's a really major kind of infrastructure failures, you know, so the leaking, um, it just has to be.
Because the leaks that, that are into the staff areas, have those been remedied? Is not.
No, that's the one that, um, needs to, it's a big project. They need to.
So that's, that's what you're talking about. Okay. I, I, I don't think it's fair that our staff that does so much for us has to manage with getting flooded.
I mean, the good thing is that Public Works has been really good about putting our big, the tar, you know, they, they put that big plastic thing up and that actually has stopped, you know, that prevented the leaks. The last couple of big rains that we've had, we didn't have a leak. So that's great, but it's not really sustainable to have that. And the community room is unlikely to be going anywhere, right? Even if we build a new library that we need to fix, the community room that's leaking.
Sure.
To the bottom. And definitely, yeah, some of the safety stuff.
I, I appreciate you sharing that with us and would commend you to work with our liaison and see if there's anything that we can do to prioritize in the budget. That we're otherwise going to be there.
And there, there are fun, I mean, you know, the city has, uh, account one oh five, which is like building facility maintenance. And it, you know, there's some big funds in there. So I, I, without looking at the CIP budget, I don't remember exactly where everything was coming from, but I'm pretty sure it was like, you know, we hoped that some of it will come from this and the others just coming from that regular building, you know, maintenance improvements fund. So we'll give you an update next month.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And I did want to mention that I, I don't have a full report for you, but I did attend the Library Journal Design Institute up in Hayward last week, early week before. And that was really great. Met a number of really great architectural firms that this is what they do. They do libraries, they do beautiful libraries. Um, visited a couple of libraries, Hayward, um, which is just a really incredible, uh, library and got to talk to these architects and had some good sessions where they, again, I don't have it in front of me, but I'll share a little bit more with you about that next time. I just didn't have time to kind of write it up and tell you what I learned, but it was really useful, you know, just to make those connections and.
Groundwork.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you so much. I want to thank our liaison for standing a little over. I think it was important that you're here. And since we had no public comment at the front, we have no public comment at the back, with no further items or comments from staff and or board members. I will now adjourn the meeting at eight oh six PM to our next meeting on November nine, twenty twenty-three, seven PM. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you.
One moment.